We're gonna stand here and we're gonna have conversation and discussion. Pros and cons of the burning situation we have in the city sunbury. The city sunbury has ordinances in place, just like every other community. We have packs and packs, I don't know what they are. There's really not a lot of difference between them. We are not. We are not gonna get any debates. Everybody gets to talk one time. Pros and cons, what your issues are, we're gonna document that. So council has that information in front of them to make a decision next Monday. There'll be no decisions made here tonight. And like I said, we're not gonna get any debates. We already have, a lot of this is neighborhood, neighbors against neighbors. We all know how that is. We're not here to debate any neighborhood battles. We're just here to debate what you're for and what you're against and what you'd like to see changed within the realm of what we have. So, I don't care who starts it off, but again, we will not be debating, we will not be using any names, not calling anybody any names. We're not talking about your neighbor, we're talking about your situation, what you see like to be seen changed or what you support. So, being that said...
You might wanna put a time limit on that now.
I wanna do what?
Put a time limit on that. Or you'll be in here for two hours or three hours.
We'll do that.
That's why everybody got your message, talk Dave.
Yeah, okay, we can live with that. We can live with that. All right, who wants to start? Like I said, we're just pretty much listening. Whoever wants to talk, just tell me you're, you know, what you wanna talk about, sort of what the problem is in your situation.
Dave, I'll start it off. I think these fire pits are quite used to the city. I think a lot of people like them. So I think we should set some kind of guidelines that are already made, popularly, they're commercially made. I think we should stick with something like that. I think we should stick with that they might have to be out by a certain time, let's say 10, 11 o'clock at night. They can't be burning after that. Say height for them, maybe the commercial says, well, you can't do that way because, you know, a lot of them are made with blocks and rebar and stuff like that. Because some are more commercially made that way, like blocks rust out there in our Carmel. Anything else I have is extinguish before they go to bed, make sure the fire is out completely. No burning of any kind of trash.
Well, that's all right, yeah.
Yeah, we already have that, but you know, it's nice to touch base again. Fire should be no higher than what a laphorn is for a commercial product would have said with the screen itself, so you don't have no barn fires. And I say there should be, all right, do I have a 10 feet from a home?
What do we have now?
Not right now, I don't...
High pop? Wait a minute, Mike, what is it now? Is there a distance from a building? There's something I remember even, is it 10 feet?
Right now, the distance, right now, the distance is common sense.
Okay.
I think 10, 10 feet is a little ridiculous, Jeff.
Okay, just do it up there.
Excuse me. I would say maybe three to five feet. And with your extinguishment, note there, I think that when we're burning, we should have some type of extinguishment apparatus or present well-burner.
Yeah, I think it says the order is not about water. It asks me... Okay, Mr. Schwaner?
Okay. First of all, I wanted you to give this picture, this is one next to me. Can you tell me what's wrong with that picture? That's the one that's next to me now. It's not the same receptacle that I initially started this on. This is a different one now. And this is what you call it, what?
Chimene?
Mm-hmm. That's, I think that's what you call it, chimney. Okay. I gave Terry a copy this, this week, one night. Did any of you council members see this?
Yeah.
The ordinance from...
We have a whole stack of them.
From Schwanesville?
I think I read that one, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to just, you know, read a couple here that I think maybe you should take into consideration as far as pros and cons. All fire rings or pits must be located a minimum, now this is fire rings and fire pits, he's basically a homemade.
Lawn mowers, Mr. Schwaner?
Right.
Pardon?
Lawn mowers. Very good. Must be a minimum of 25 feet from a structure, combustibles such as houses or garages, sheds, propane tanks, wood piles, wooden fences. Manufactured freestanding fire pits must be located a minimum of 10 feet away from any structure or combustible, house, garage, shed, propane tank, wood pile, wooden fences. You look at that picture later, every one of these is violating. Am I correct? The wood pile is there, there's a lawnmower sitting there, possibly gas in the tank 'cause they use it. Wooden picnic table, wooden fence. So, I mean, this is, this is just common sense. These people do not have common sense. I live next door. They do not have common sense.
Do you, I think up top there, you said 25 foot, was it?
Those, the 25, that was for fire pits and fire rings that people basically build themselves. Now, okay, that's, a minimum is 25 feet from a building. The manufactured ones, such as the chimney that I gave five minutes... All right, the minimum is 10 feet from the building, wooden fence.
What does that, Mr. Schwaner?
Schwanesville, down towards Philadelphia. Okay? Okay, continue. The fire must be constantly attended and supervised by any adult until the fire has been completely extinguished. A connected garden hose or other means to extinguish the fire must be readily available. Use of flammable or combustible liquid accelerates is not permitted. Recreational fire, well, that's on, oh wait. Recreational fires are not permitted on windy days when the smoke may create a nuisance for nearby neighbors. Recreational burning is not permitted on commercial or, you know, industrial sites such as... Police, fire department officials are authorized to require that any fire be immediately extinguished and discontinued if, as determined that the fire is not in compliance with the above rules, the smoke is offensive to nearby neighbors, or the burning is determined to be constituent to the hazardous conditions. That is all common sense.
10 foot is a standard fire separation distance from a building. 10 foot would probably be the optimal setback.
Yeah, but some of these are, you know, you haven't realized.
Okay.
They shouldn't have burned it if there were...
I sat down.
They shouldn't have burned it.
Okay. There are some other ones. Lewisburg, I checked, Lewisburg does not allow burning by renters. They are now, if they rent property, they are now allowed to burn. Some towns have, they must have a permit to burn. So, you know, there's a lot of...
Renters out there with it.
Pardon?
Well, with renters burning or not?
Well, it's not their property that they're burning on. Some of those, another one I think was in this one here is that a tenant must have permission from the landlord. Lewisburg has one in place now where if you're renting property, you're not allowed to burn.
That probably has a lot to do with you and college town, too.
Well, your college kids, yes, coming in. And they're renting all these establishments, yes, correct. Another, another one is...
Out of two minutes, well, last one, go ahead.
Another one is a time limit. It has to be extinguished before dark.
We don't start them.
Start them at dark. No, that's only common sense to them. Sorry, your own.
The last council meeting, we asked if we were looking at some stuff. Then I researched this a little bit. I know we said, I know I sent stuff to you.
Yeah.
You know, as, as we were researching this, there's a lot of ordinances that we got back from different areas around here. And there's only, really only one place, although Nori I believe has it too. We didn't get anything back from, uh, Lefenberg, yeah, Milton's, only one where you can burn paper afterwards. The ordinance from Lewisburg, I don't believe says anything about renters. I think we have it here. And...
No, I gave that to Terry.
Somebody did, I don't know if it was my question.
The other thing about, pretty much everybody has the ordinance in place and it's basically, you know, you only can burn it if it's good. So, there's no, there's no chimneys or fire pits allowed in Lewisburg or into Lefenberg, Ralpho, Campbell. However, Ralpho is unique because they allow you to get a permit for, you can burn out there, you have to get a permit to do it. It has to be for a specific reason, so, you know, there's, there's ways around that. You know, they said up to 25 feet. Everything I researched, it ranges anywhere, most of them were 10 feet. It ranges anywhere from 10 feet to 25 feet. There's not like 15 feet or 20 feet, it's either 10 feet or 25 feet. 10 feet seems to be about the norm for that. And the times, they vary. You know, all the literature that I read, times vary, you know. I would suggest something maybe 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 7 o'clock in the morning, 11 o'clock at night or midnight to 7 o'clock in the morning. Only because if you follow some of the other rules that you have in the city, you have a noise ordinance that starts at 11 o'clock. So you can piggyback that right onto that saying, you know, fire has to be out by 11 o'clock, 'cause you have a noise ordinance. You know, at that point, there's not gonna be anybody to that court carrying on, you know, around, around, around fire pit. The biggest thing that I think is concerned is, is that these should either be manufactured fire pit or they should be constructed by a certified landscaper of some type. I don't think you want it limited to saying that a landscaper can't command. If someone has the money to be able to put something nice in, they should be able to do that. And, you know, fire pits or the chimneys, and chimneys, when they talk about chimneys, chimneys is really a specific thing that's made out of clay and brick, I mean, and wood. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not like a fire pit that you see over at Lowe's or Walmart. That's not really a chimney, chimney is something specific. So when you talk about that, you put that in there, but really, a manufactured device of some type, if you follow the guidelines, you should be okay. I know I'm gonna go over my two minutes there, but...
You got about 20 seconds left.
Great. The biggest thing is, is that, you know, you can only burn certain things. Pressed wood or seasoned wood, like you would in your fireplace. The problem they run into a lot of places is that they're burning greenwood or they're burning leadwood, which is gonna produce your, your smolder, and it's just common sense, you can't do that. And, you know, there's, there's some ways that, and I know you've got some of the paperwork that we sent you, that, you know, there's, there's some clauses there that, that would probably fit right in and kinda meet the needs of everyone involved. You're never gonna stop smoke. You're never gonna, you can't crack stupid, okay? There's no cure for stupid. People are gonna do certain things. But there's also safeguards built into some of the stuff that we sent you that, you know, police code or the fire department can say without, whether it's at the timeframe or not, you know, to put it out. If it's becoming a nuisance, you put it out. The other thing that's in there is too, is, is that, you know, if there's burning ordinance in the county for some unknown reason, you know, the weather's really dry or something like that, you know, it's just common sense. If the burning ordinance goes into effect at the county level, then obviously you can't burn in the city. And you can't use things in the city. It's just common sense. And that, and that's a part of that. So, I think, you know, unless there's, and we, we did do a lot of, you know, looking at this stuff, but there's questions, couldn't I be able to answer some for you between Dale and I? And we don't have any answers, I'm sure Michael here can help us as well.
Kind of they pop up, yeah, because we did ask you, you and Dale, to do that. I do appreciate that.
Quite awesome, you know. You can write all the pros and cons you want in there, the end result is, is that either people are for or are against it, and they're not gonna be happy one way or the other.
Right, and we truly do have enough, we have nothing new in this now, just, we're probably not looking for one thing to change here.
Yeah, I, I know what it looks like, but I know that, I know there's, there's ways of developing that's gonna make it better and...
Right.
More sustainable.
All right, thank you, your honor. Yes, ma'am.
That's just for argument sake, that say that somebody who has a fire pit would not want to burn in the winter. That means, the way things are heading out now, a person could burn every day of the week from early spring through the summer, through the fall to beginning of winter, which means anyone who lives near them, who has any kind of breathing difficulty, is limited to the inside of their house three out of the four seasons of the year. And I think there's some kind of basic difficulty in that. You know, if you're gonna go so far as to say people can burn, then let's talk about, you know, they can only burn certain days of the week. You know, weekend or whatever. But to be able to light a fire every single day of the week and light it at 8 o'clock in the evening and let it burn all night, which is what happens now because people go into their houses and don't bother putting it out, they just let it smolder. One neighbor has, has clothes hanging on the line, she has to take and re-wash them because the person down the street was burning and left.
I'm trying to figure out what you're, I'm not, you're getting to, you went season, seasonal burning, you went daily burning, what do you actually...
I'm thinking that if we're gonna actually go the route of saying burning is allowed, which personally I think should not be in the city limits, okay? So you gotta put me on one of those sides, you gotta put me on the con side.
Well, that's, I'm a pro, but I'm not sure where you're going with this.
But, well, what I'm saying is, A, I don't think burning should be allowed in the city limits. But, the way things have been talked about here for the last few weeks, it sounds like the city council and the mayor, pardon me, are pushing towards, well, we should allow burning and, you know, with the interview that Todd Snyder gave to the paper about, you know, we can't stop people from going and buying these things, so what are we gonna do?
You're still addressing my question. I have limit burns. Are you talking about no burning on Tuesday, talk about no burning in the summertime?
Okay. What I'm saying is, I would like to see no burning allowed in the city limits, period. Now, do I think that that will happen with the people who are in power now? Absolutely not. So what I'm saying is, since I absolutely believe that that will never come to grips in my lifetime, that if that's the case, then let's look at allowing people who don't wanna burn things have a reasonable expectation of enjoying their own home, their own porch, their own yard without having to wear an oxygen tank or a gas mask.
So we're gonna stay with the no burning, no fire. Is your argument there? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm in favor. I live right next door to the van and we have two air conditioners within three yards of it and I'm responsible for going fine. I think you have to look at the possibility, I think you have to look at the possibility that you face with an possible catastrophe to everybody. I raised your code, it looks like it's perfectly accepted, both burning's been allowed since time began. It doesn't bother really anybody. Anybody that would have a serious medical condition would not pick the limit in Tuscon Hannah. You're ordered on three sides by the three busiest streets in Sunbury. You have Front Street, Packer Street, Regis Street, constant trucks up and down 24 hours a day. The tunes for them are often bothering people. So I can't see how the burning would be. And one thing I would disagree with on the pro side is commercial bay. We had one for two or three years that we bought at Lowe's, telepart, and, you know, just disintegrated on its own. Didn't last it for years and years in its home bay. I think you may have to have people look at it as a permit, you know, have the code officer check it out after some complaint. But if it looks reasonably assertive bay, I don't think that should be limited to commercial bay. And as for time limits, people enjoying their own yards or their own properties, as long as they're not violating the codes that you already have placed with, with noise, should not be limited to how long they can burn.
Yeah, I've had people that have called me, that said to me, I bought a house and I went back, patio, there's a, there's a burn pit there that matches my house type thing. They can tell me I can't burn and that I've been doing it for my entire life type of stuff. So, but I, but the idea of commercial doesn't, you're right, you go buy a grill, some girls fall apart in six months and others, next one's lasting five years. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, one thing we should do is define burn pits. What, what exactly are we talking about? When somebody says a burn pit, I think they're gonna get a shovel, go out in the backyard, dig a pit, fill it up with trash and burn it. I think we oughta define these burn pits we're talking about.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Don't we already have an ordinance on, on burning trash?
On, yes.
I know several years ago that they went, they went with the burn grounds.
Right.
Now, we had a neighbor who no longer lives in the neighborhood, but she burned 24/7. She would burn anything and everything. When she would empty her pit, she'd dump it on North Second Street Extension until they paved it. Now she, and then after that, she dumped it between the pavement and the wall, whatever circumstance. So, it didn't matter, she's good when I had to do it anyway. I have two other neighbors that have burn pits. When they are done with a burn pit, it is extinguished every night with water. We have no complaints. You smell a little bit of smoke once in a while, but if you tell them you smell smoke, they burn it out. 'Cause they don't want the aggravation of anybody complaining.
And that's what they will.
That's using common sense.
That is using common sense.
Shutting the whole, the power's up here, using common sense, you wouldn't shut the whole city down.
No.
Thank you.
What you got there, common sense is what you got there.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, city council, what's the reason, why are we here?
We're just here for people, kind of the last couple council meetings, so we're here tonight to listen to pros and cons of this, to see if the city council's gonna make any changes.
I've been at every one, and all I'm hearing now is a fire pit. It was charcoal grills, grass grills. What is the reasoning? What, what's the reason? Can you please tell me?
The reason for what?
What are you saying? No fires?
Well, there's some people are, she's saying she doesn't want any burning at all. We're, we're asking you.
Do not put...
I just want you to know after...
You don't sit there and say you want no burning at all.
We were talking...
Did you say that, ma'am?
No.
I never said that.
No. Okay, I've been here now three times.
Where'd that come from?
Excuse me, you started this talking about fire pits. So, when you talk about burning in a fire pit, I say no burning.
Excuse me?
If you're talking about a charcoal grill or a gas grill, I'm not talking about that.
Run, you got the other floor.
I don't have a chimney, I don't have a fire pit, I don't have any of it. I don't care who does either. I'm for it, I have a grill. My concern is, somebody wants to say I can't charcoal, I can't use my gas grill. And I, I did some research of my own. Something this city here can't do and can't put a code on a smell. Now, I don't know if people are complaining because smell of this or that. You can't control smell. You can control emissions.
I mean, most of our ordinances and zoning say...
You can control emissions, molecular emissions, but you can't control smell.
See, Robert, I hear like the barbecues or anything like that, or smoker, put in mirrors and modify the pitch we're talking about.
Something to the...
Well, nobody got precise with that until the season. That's all I'm hearing right now.
All right, run this to the floor, hold it, hold it. Run, it's just...
I understand what you're talking about with the burning and stuff. When this all started, there wasn't gonna be any charcoal grills, gas grills, the whole nine yards.
That's why we're gonna settle them next Monday.
I don't have a chimney, I don't have a fire pit, I don't care who does. I'm for whoever wants it, don't try to control smell.
All right, thank you.
Somebody, we can, give your hand. Yeah, I live on Tuscon Hannah, I have it for 18 years. About three years ago, I built my own fire burning, wood burning device. It's made out of stainless steel rod iron. The top of it's covered with an indoor fireplace cover, so it's certified for inside. I mean, if, if you have something built, the code should be able to inspect it and say that it's safe to burn. And I had a neighbor that lives four houses away from me, claims to pretend their air conditioner and it's on the other side of their house. So I don't see how smoke can get in with their air conditioning. I don't, I usually burn on Saturday nights when it gets dark till about midnight. I mean, I think that's fair. I don't think people should be allowed to burn during the week. I think it should be just on the weekends. They're now taking pictures of my yard. Some found from, uh, knocktheitem.com with other pictures in there. Now, people would hide behind something like that where they can say what they want and say, oh, it's just a joke, so nobody can call, fall back on, that's a joke. I had a neighbor who was dying of cancer and another neighbor was told to tear their garage down by certain people calling the code. He built a fireplace. He has three kids. He was waiting to put a steel plate on top to have a cookout with his kids. Code was called by the neighbor that he was burning garbage in. When they got there, another neighbor told me the grass was still in it. So, somebody's telling fibs. You know, enjoying flowers in your yard, you have to have it in your yard to enjoy them. If you can stand and talk for half an hour with asthma and yell across to your yard, you pyromaniacs, I should call the fire department when I was already told I could You guys have been lied to the last couple meetings, and I wasn't here to defend myself. But I live on Tuscon Hannah, and a lot of the, a lot of stuff that's being said in stories. I think that's all I can say.
Thank you. Yes.
Dave, I'm one of the ones who said about that.
Yeah, I didn't know she was here.
Puts it out whenever I burn. My, you know my son, he has a fire pit, he has his friends up. He enjoys doing that. He's off the street, he's not causing no trouble. They put like three pieces of wood in it at a time. They don't have flames shooting eight, nine feet in the air like some people do. That's ridiculous. That picture that's floating around, that's ridiculous. That should not be. There should be a time limit as to how late you can burn. We usually put ours out maybe between, anywhere between 10 and 11:30. I never let him have a fire during the week, during school. It's not allowed. Fridays and Saturday nights, he's allowed to. He has to put it out, and he puts it out where it's cold to the touch. He hoses it down. When he gets rid of his stuff, he throws it in the garbage. When it's completely dry the next day, he puts it in a garbage can, disposes of the problem. I tell my neighbors, if it bothers them, to please let me know, we will put it out. I don't see a problem with it. If there is a problem, my idea is, if the problems continue, make us have burning permits. Not like real expensive, 'cause some of us can't afford it. Get a burning permit. If they're called and they find something wrong with it, you get your permit revoked and you get a fine. And then, you know, that causes, maybe that'll help with the high flames, letting it burn all night unintended. 'Cause, yes, we had a neighbor like that. She left it burn constantly, and it was a homemade pit. It would smolder all night, and then if the wind picked up a little bit during the day, it would light right back up and there was nobody there. That's not the case with me or my other neighbor that has. And, you know, we don't burn every day of the week. We burn for enjoyment when we have picnics, but it's not every day of the week.
Good. And she does burn dry wood, that I know. That's not garbage. Yes, ma'am.
We say common sense, but most people, a lot of people, don't have common sense. I think you need rules to follow by, and if they don't follow the rules, then they get a fine. But it has to be spelled out, what they can do and what they can't do.
Yes. Yep.
Jerome, I actually wouldn't have time to put this together, him or I, to ease the off of it. And I don't like, would not wish to have this used again for two minutes. For the audience, can we read what we tentatively have? I think what, what council's gonna have to decide is what the majority wants versus the minority, okay? Keep in mind, the way people work today, their weekends could be a Tuesday night and a Wednesday night. So to say you can't burn during the week, a lot of industry things aren't going that way. Here's what Jerome is able to put down. Now, we have to add the word, we have to put the definition in there of what the products are yet. Plus, we feel that there should be a permit process, a free permit process through the code office. They're explained, they're given a piece of paper. You violate these rules, yank, it's gone. It don't even have to be a fine. Prohibited burn, burning that is offensive or injectable because of smoke or odor emissions where one hapless period conditions or local circumstances make such fires hazardous shall be permitted or prohibited. Hours of operation. A person shall not maintain any outdoor burning from 12 a.m. to 7 a.m. unless permitted and approved by a city official, and only after application for such. Extinguishment authority. The police, fire chief, or code office is authorized to order to extinguishments by the responsible person for the fire department of any burning that creates or adds to a hazardous or objectable situation. Conditions of operation. Outdoor burning of aged logs in a freestanding outdoor fireplace, outdoor fireplace shall be permitted only under the following conditions. A said outdoor fireplace shall employ screens and a lid to completely enclose the fire and burning logs contained therein or a chimney. It is recommended that the fire heights be no more than two feet while burning. Only aged logs or commercially produced compressed logs shall be burned. At no time is the burning of lumber, pallets, scrap wood, painted, or treated wood, pre-trimming leaves, yard waste, paper, cardboard, rubber, or garbage and similar items permitted. The outdoor fireplace shall be located not less than 10 feet from the nearest partition or portion of any structure, tree, vehicle, or building, nor within five feet of any property line. No outdoor fireplace shall be permitted to emit offensive or objectable smoke or odors or when other circumstances make excuses of said outdoor fireplace hazardous. The fire, the outdoor fireplace shall be used strictly in adherence with all manufacturer's guidelines, specifications issued with respect to make and model of said outdoor fireplace. Once a fire has been started in an outdoor firm fireplace, the lid and side screens shall be secured and shall not be removed until the fire is out or extinguished. And no object shall be permitted to protrude outside the lid or screen, band screens by a forward fire or burning within the outdoor fire fireplace, provided that recreational fires utilized of food shall be exempt from said requirement during that period or food being put over flame. Any fire in an outdoor fireplace shall be intended at all times by a person of 18 age, 18 years of age or older. For the purpose of this section, an approved outdoor fireplace includes those commercially manufactured devices specifically designed, intended, and advertised for the purpose of recreational fires such as chimneys, outdoor fireplaces, and those areas specifically designed by a landscape professional and built within the confines of depth that are constructed of stone, concrete blocks, or other non-combustible materials. Those fireplace, those fireplaces constructed by a landscape professional using stone, concrete, or block shall be exempt from use of mid-screen but shall comply with all other requirements. The outdoor fireplace cannot exceed three feet in diameter or taller. An outdoor fireplace shall be intended at all times when in use until the fire is out or extinguished. A water source or other provision for extinguishing the fire shall be immediately accessible at all times when there is a fire in the outdoor fireplace. And I think with some fine tuning, I think that, because you're going to need an ordinance, it's something that everybody can live by, but like I said, the majority should not be hindered because their following procedure is right.
Thank you very much. I have one comment on that. I just don't see that as being enforceable. I just don't see, who's going to enforce it? Who's going to make sure there's an 18-year-old fire? Who's going to make sure they didn't throw his firebomb cup in it? Who's going to make sure this? It's unenforceable. We might be better off just with a resolution, with an exemption to our current ordinance that just says, add to the exemptions what's allowed is barbecue grills and cooking grills and food, you know, and whatever else we want to put in there as an exemption. That way, it won't take three readings, we can just do it with a resolution, you know, and it's all the different parts of it.
But again, Dave, if you go with the permit, have each unit have to be permitted and give approval. They know the do's and the don'ts, they signed for that ahead of time. So then the fire department, police department, or code office is called. If somebody's not playing by the rules, okay, shut it down, it's done, it's over. As council, if you guys want to enact fines and enforcement, I'm not quite sure how you want it to work, how much you want to put there. But I think just the fact that you say, no, it's done, you got it removed, you know, that's.
Mr. Mayor, what happens now to the people who already had their chimneys or pits? And it's not as the ordinance says within the diameters? Are those people going to be grandfathered into the new ordinance or resolution?
No, it would be like, just like you said originally, when I said originally that there's a, if you bought a house 10 years ago and had a fire pit built in the back and it's, and it's three and a half foot wide and the new thing says three, that would be grandfathered. But again, you'd be going back to per, per home, if the permit situation came back, you'd be going back to a place so you can either be grandfathered or you have to go from there.
One more thing, please. And with the time, I would, myself, I don't have these pits and stuff, but that the time would be 11 o'clock so that it coordinates with the, your noise ordinance?
Oh, yes.
Because if you say 12, then people will be putting it out at 12 and it's still going to be burning for an hour or so after. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think homemade devices, if they're well-built and they're inspected by the chief of fire police, they should be had a permit and be allowed to use it.
I have it up here, professional make or commercial make. I mean, to me, if a landscaper designed something, for example, that would be professional make even if he built it himself.
We use the word landscape, but it could be Martin Steel making one.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else?
And Dave, one more thing, just with, if you have it permitted, then the code, the city, or whoever, police permit, knows about, who has it registered? To have a better handle on the control. You have, you have to have.
Okay. This gentleman didn't speak, go ahead.
Considering that most of the fires that are, people are burning are to cook food, is it possible to limit that either a gas grill or a charcoal grill? Because that way, at least that when it's over, the charcoal will burn out and obviously the gas will be turned off when your food is finished. And you wouldn't have a lot of smoke coming from the charcoal or, or the gas grill.
They talk about limit food preparation with just gas or, or charcoal, right? I don't know how many other people, like I said, I don't know how many other people have noxious. Like I said, a pit in your backyard that you cook food in anyway, probably not many, but there probably is some, probably, I'm sure I did.
And if I could ask Joe a question. The city of Sunbury, I'm certain developed a fire code for a reason. Could you tell us what those reasons were initially?
Just to avoid one property catching another property on fire, like their neighbor's property. I mean, 10 foot's a good setback for hot embers and they have restrictions over them. That's, that's what the code says, you know, as far as, you know, distance from the property.
Do the health of the citizens come into play with that ruling?
Not, not so much in the fire protection, it'd be more like air protection, the other part, the fire protection.
I think we still probably had burn barrels, but at least in the 60s.
Yeah. And that was mostly due to smell that they got rid of those too.
Right.
Just the odor of the garbage.
People, that's right, people just saw anything and they're like.
If I lived next to Sunbury Hospital, would I be allowed to burn things in my garden?
As long as we're.
For the health of the people who are in the hospital, if it's prohibited next to the hospital, you would think the health of the citizens would come into play also in limiting smoke.
Okay.
That was the whole idea of what we were just beginning.
First off, you don't.
Noxious.
Let me, let me. First off, you don't eliminate a wood fireplace in someone's house that may produce some smoke.
Right.
Why would you talk about, you know, not being able to burn next to a hospital?
Well, somebody's house. You talk about. On the roof, two foot above the roof, and that's where the smoke goes.
That's negative. That is totally negative. I don't know if you've ever been down. Yes, it is, Joe. If you've ever been down the third floor when they're burning, chief, it is completely full of smoke down there at the corner of Fourth, South Fourth and Spruce. Completely full of smoke down there.
When they're burning what?
When they're burning wood.
In?
Their fireplace.
In the house?
In the house.
Well, then something's wrong. It's not a tall enough chimney.
Regardless.
Well, then our code office should take a look at it.
Well, I don't think it's code violation. I think we're okay.
Well, if it's not tall enough, it is.
And you can't control smoke.
Okay. Did you have something else, Ryan? No. Anybody else?
I have something.
Certain atmospheric pressures, I don't care if your chimney's 30 foot up here, it's going to hang it down. Here's the gentleman will tell you, there's times it's right here and his chimney, I'm going up there depending on what the atmospheric pressures are, and it'll come down. Not very often, but it can come down.
Yeah, you do see it once in a while no matter where you're at. Yes, ma'am.
I used to live in Milton and they have, they still do burn barrels there, but they only allow burning on Wednesdays. So I don't know, I think maybe having burning allowed certain days and not allowed certain days would have a happy medium for people that don't want the burning, but people that do want the burning, because then it would be allowed, just those people that don't want it would have days where they could enjoy their property without the smoke.
You said they still allow the burnt paper, though?
Yeah.
Burn barrels?
On Wednesdays, yep.
Wow. They allow that everywhere, say Pennsylvania 20 years ago.
Anything related to recyc, Dave, anything related to, in the borough of Milton itself, anything recycled as the city of Sunbury is not allowed to be burned. Newspapers, high grade, anything like that.
I'm just saying, burn barrels are only allowed on Wednesdays. That's my point of this whole thing.
Now, the borough's surrounded by West and East Hill Square Township. A lot of people are triggered at to being in the borough by the sun.
And they allow, somebody's, she's saying somebody's burning up there.
Well, I lived in Milton, I was right in the town and I know that they allowed it just on Wednesdays. That's my whole point of the whole thing is that it was just on certain days, so it doesn't bother people every day of the week.
Okay, I mean, anybody else? Well, let this gentleman back here.
Mayor, for something to answer this gentleman's question, I'm really not taking a position on either side, but your Part 53, 5, the article, considering outdoor wood burning furnaces, the council has taken a position on health. It is generally recognized that the types of fuel, and this is in regard to outdoor wood burning furnaces, but it is generally recognized that the types of fuel used and the scale and duration of burning by outdoor wood burning furnaces creates noxious and hazardous smoke, soot, fumes, odors, and air pollution, and be detrimental to citizens' health and can deprive neighboring residents of the enjoyment of their property or premises. Therefore, with the adoption of this article, it is the intention of the city of Sunbury council members to establish and impose restrictions upon the construction and operation of outdoor wood burning furnaces within the limits of the city for the purpose of securing and promoting the public health, comfort, convenience, safety, welfare, and prosperity of the city and its inhabitants.
Okay, well, there's no discussion here tonight on outdoor furnaces. We're not talking about recreational burning.
I understand that.
It's a night, a whole different event. Go ahead.
It's wood burning, that's what we're talking about.
We're talking about wood burning. On fireplaces, we're not talking about furnaces. Furnaces are a totally different thing. They're pre-made with ash and wood. And what he's talking about is has nothing to do with what the conversation is.
Oh, it's a fire. Anybody else?
Stick to the conversation.
You have any comments, sir?
I just wanted to add, if we're going to go the way of permits, that whoever is going to obtain a permit, that it can be displayed in front of their house so that everyone would know that that person does have a right to burn in the backyard.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, that's, that's every permit you give, that's, if you actually like it.
People burning, you don't know if they have.
Especially as a neighbor, yeah. Anybody else?
I have something to say.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a witch hunt. That's what this is. I live on Tuscaloosa Avenue, I've lived there 13 years. My neighbor has a fire pit. Him and his wife work very hard, 40 hours a week, maybe longer. Saturday night, they have a fire. I've never been in their fire pit, I've never been invited, but I sit on my front porch, I sit on my back patio, it doesn't bother me, the smoke must be going the other way because, you know, they're the ones that are complaining. If you're going to send the code officer somewhere and the code officer comes and he says, and he checks it and he says, it's okay, and then the next night the police are there, what are we doing? What are we doing here? I mean, really, we're on a witch hunt. The code officer has other things to do. I mean, if this guy is illegally smoking dope or burning a fire and, and everything, then complain about it. But you know what? He's having a couple beers with his wife on Saturday night, no noise, I never hear a radio, you know, this is ridiculous.
It's my name, it's own business.
And, that's right. And if you're going to have a fire pit and this is going to be your rule and you're going to say if one person complains about the smoke, you have to put it out. Out is always going to happen, it's out. Trust me.